God and Father, we thank you so much for your loving kindness to attend the mercy of fifteen quarters. We ask down that you bless us and guide us to take care of the business for us in peace and on the way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with your ten justices' power.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Messina?
Reverend.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Reverend.
Mr. Etherly? Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Miller? I have four present and two absent.
Ladies and gentlemen, council members of the city administration, and the general public, and the guests here in the gallery, um, we have, I think, what might be a brief agenda, um, and of course, there's a couple of things we can do. We started just a little before six, so we can just go to the minutes, at least into that point where, uh, other people may come in, then we can double back. But we do have some guests here in the, in the audience. Um, a couple of them are, uh, Mr. Bill Miles with Miles Real Estate out of Marianna. Uh, it's on the agenda, uh, dealing with a tiny house and some discussions he's had with code enforcement. And he has, uh, is it Grayson?
Grayson Gordon.
Grayson Gordon, who's here with him. Uh, we have Ms. Ruthie Pride and her mother, Ms. Ollie, here. Uh, that's an item that's been, she came to the last meeting. We told her to come to this meeting, but it's still not on the agenda, but she should be here tonight. And we have, uh, Reverend, uh, Leroy Carter, Bishop Leroy Carter, as well as Mr. West Harnett. And those are two of the five people we're considering for the Port Authority appointments. We got a list here sent to us from Mr. John Edwards. But what I do, uh, to give Mr. Etherly and Dr. Miller a chance to get here, as well as the general public, is go over to the minutes, um, and see if we can get those done. Uh, the April first minutes start on page eighteen of one hundred and twenty-nine. Uh, following the roll call, the motion to approve the minutes, uh, the motion made by Mr. Saint Columbia, seconded by Ms. Miller, is passed unanimously. Uh, no action taken on treasurer's report for January or February for the city auto water department. Uh, no action taken on the Port Authority, on the Airport Commission. There was a, I believe we were adopted these minutes. I've had a memory reading this.
April first, yes.
Yeah. So we've done these. So we'll skip April first to April fifteenth. Um, the April fifteenth minutes are found on page twenty-two of one twenty-nine. And after the roll call, um, there was a motion to approve the April first minutes, and they were, uh, passed. And then, uh, there was a motion to approve the Catholic hollow reunion, uh, and that motion passed unanimously. Um, the table, you all tabled a butt-based pay ordinance, you tabled honorary street naming. Uh, executive session was not held because the lawsuit had been brought involving those same, uh, people. Uh, the Port Authority, uh, Reverend Carter was nominated, but no action was taken. They needed more information to be dealt with on tonight's agenda. And on the Airport Commission, the mayor nominated Mr. Knapp, and the council declined to take that matter up. And there was a sanitation rate discussion that was tabled until our meeting on May the twentieth. So those are the April fifteenth minutes. April twenty-second and April twenty-ninth basically, um, say that we had a roll call and discussion. There was no motions in either of those meetings. Uh, nothing was adopted or approved in either of those meetings. Uh, on the twenty-second, which is found on page twenty-five, um, the council discussed the treasurer's reports for December, through December twenty-twenty-four, and then we had January, February, and March of twenty-twenty-five. They also discussed the two most recent audit reports from Arkansas Division Legislative Audit. And finally, the council discussed overtime and employees who have seemingly worked at least ten-hour days every day during the months of January through March, accumulating over nine hundred hours so far. And then we adjourned on the twenty-ninth, um, the, the biggest part of the minutes just reflects that Reverend Tammy Foreman came forward and gave you all the presentation about the area, including Lucy, Gordon, Rembrandt, and Lithicum Streets and the flooding down there. And she had lived there for seven years. They'd flooded, uh, five times or average of every one and a half years. She also brought her brother-in-law Calvin Foreman, who lived there for seventy years, and, uh, attested to the flooding as well. Uh, the council heard from the city treasurer on the most recent financial reports for the water and sewer departments, and there was a question and answer session. At the conclusion of that session, the meeting was adjourned. No business was taken up. And those are your minutes. So we have a motion to adopt the minutes from April fifteenth, April twenty-second, April twenty-ninth.
Yes, I move.
Ms. Miller moves to adopt the minutes. Mrs. Davis, second the motion. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Messina?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Four present, two absent.
All right. Um, I would guess the, the easiest way to do this is to, to order the things, the, uh, guests got on the agenda, and I would go with Ms. Pride, Pride, uh, to address her issue, and then the Port Authority second, and then, because I believe it'd be shorter, and then Mr. Miles after that. All right. Ms. Pride, will you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Uh, I'm here today to request, um, to require, uh, acquire the building in West Hilton, the old library. Um, so before you, you should have a proposal and a letter from me, um, telling you more about my vision and my qualifications. And these, the things that's listed on there are things that I'm already doing, but I just need more space to do the things that I do and to add more to it.
Would you like to tell the listening audience some of the things that you want to do?
Are you going to have in the, in the space?
Okay. Um, one thing would be a library, a small library and a study space, a quiet space, um, because I know for myself, being in school and still in school, um, is not too many places around town in the afternoon where you can go and sit quietly and study. So that's one of my visions. Another one, I have a legacy birthing project. And with that legacy birthing project, um, uh, I teach, um, parenting skills, um, car seat safety, safe sleep skills, um, among a lot of other things. And also, uh, one of the things I just, uh, did was I took a job as a CNA, uh, CPA, and went through the training so that I would be a more skilled to help them, um, to get jobs. You know, even there, if they're pregnant or if they have had their baby, they could do their training online. And then when they, um, get ready to go out into the work world, uh, they'll have a job waiting on them. So those are some of the things I'm doing. Also, um, sewing, I have acquired, uh, ten sewing machines. So, um, we'll be doing some sewing, teaching them how to sew to make their clothes and babies' clothes, so that will help, you know, help them save a lot of money. Uh, I did some of that this summer, um, for the general public. And I did that, and so I had a lot of people coming out to that. And it's something needed because it's something that I want to do also. Um, uh, oh, and, uh, a, a space that I can have as a space where, um, it just won't be just a, uh, a space that's, uh, confined to a certain thing. I can move chairs, move tables, and I can use it as a bigger space for other things that we'll be doing. It'll be a lot of community events.
And also, Ms. Mrs. Pride, she knows the, um, the issues with the building, and she's going to rehab the building herself, so she's not asking us for anything. What she's going to do is, we know that it, it, that all the walls and stuff are stripped out of that building, all the wiring, everything is stripped out.
Mm-hmm.
So she would like to take this building, uh, and do something positive.
Yes.
So I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's sitting there. We keep the, the grass cut. I think that, you know, somebody that wants to come in and do something for the community. Uh, I appreciate her for asking, so, and I did tell her that she would have to seek you all approval, but this is one of those things that is, it will be good for our community. Uh, it doesn't have a heating and air system in it, so everything is out of the building. Uh, when the, we, the Phillips County Library had it at first, and what they did was took all the books out, took all everything out, I think it flooded.
And I helped them with that also, because it was full of mold.
Right. So they got everything stripped down. So it is one of those things that I think that we should, uh, so that comes, I mean, comes, the city don't have to keep the grass cut over there. They'll be responsible for that and maintaining the building. So I think those are one of those things that we, we should consider taking, you know, it's going to be used for the community.
Yes.
It's one of those things we should, should look forward to doing. I, I support her effort.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's, it's up to you all. You all have a property. I didn't want to not tell you all, but I think this is a, it's a good thing to do for the community. It's on, it's on the main street. It's something good for us. So is there any, is there any wishes from you all? Would you all wait till next meeting? Or you want to take action tonight? Or you want to have time to study it? Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis agreeing that she wants to study it? Mr. Saint Columbia, Ms. Messina, Ms. Miller, you all want to study it?
I just have a couple of questions, so.
Okay.
Um.
You're a nonprofit?
No. I mean, I work with a nonprofit. And I do, I can use, I have used their, uh, five oh one C three. I'm working on my own now. I have an LLC.
Gentlemen, you all want some time?
Well, I just got it tonight.
That's what I'm asking. Would you, would you like some time?
Would I like to do what?
Would you like to have some time to study?
Well, yeah, yeah. I just got it tonight. I didn't know we wanted to consider this tonight.
So, so, so what we, what we'll do, we'll have it back on the, the next, now quickly put it back on the agenda, so, so they'll have time to study it. Ms. Pride, I'm in favor of it, so I'm hoping that's.
It's at least a couple of weeks.
Yeah. So we, we should go put it back on the next meeting, so.
Well, a couple of weeks would be good, because I'll be out of town for two weeks in Florida. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So I, I think that'd be a good thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
I, I, I didn't get an agenda. Did they publish an agenda for tonight?
You should. It's right there in front of you.
On top.
On top.
Over here?
Uh-huh. The color, yeah.
No, I brought this.
Yeah. It's in your packet. Yeah, that's it.
This is it for tonight.
I think his next is, is, is Mr. Miles, are you next?
He had mentioned the port issue next. I'll go next, y'all.
The, the Port Authority, uh, you, you have on your, on your desk, Mr. Alex, the next is the Port Authority. Am I correct?
Yes, as the council is ready to take up the Port Authority appointments. Um, we have a email from John Edwards, and of course, it's dated today at three fifty-five P. M. and the mayor's placed it on your desk. He's requesting that we reappoint, and I guess the mayor's, uh, pointing there for you to confirm. Bishop Leroy Carter, who's here, uh, Mr. Bobby Bell, who's not here, Mr. Tyrone Stain, who's here, Mr. John McClintock, who's not here, and Mr. West Harnett, who is here. So that would.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt? I mean, is there a motion to approve these names that were submitted?
Is this, is this the ones here? Bishop Leroy Carter, Bobby Bell, is it?
If the four are already on there, Mr. West Harnett will be replacing one of the two vacant slots, or be filling one of the two vacant slots.
I move that we reappoint Bishop Carter, Bell, Stain, and McClintock, and appoint West Harnett.
Yeah.
You got, you got three seconds.
I got two.
Okay. So, uh, Madam Clerk, will you, in the discussion, sorry. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Dr. Etherly and, I mean, Don, Mr. Etherly and Dr. Miller aren't here yet, so that's four yeses and two noes. So there'll be four yeses and two noes, sorry.
Four of them are on the thing already, and we just add one more. Is that right?
Yeah. Congratulations, gentlemen. Y'all free to stay. Uh, next on the, 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 the agenda, uh, we can go to page ninety. It's code enforcement. Well, I put Bill and Miles, I'm sorry, but we got Mr. Bill Miles and a client, I believe her last name is Paulo, uh, who are here. You have copies of the email communications starting on page ninety-five, and that seems to be an email from Cal Woodridge, our code, one of our code enforcement officers, to Ms. Paulo. And then you'll see her response as it trails on page ninety-six and ninety-seven. And then a letter dated April the twenty-fifth of twenty-five, April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five from Cal Woodridge to Ms. Paulo, addressed to the address on Fourth Street. And, um. I was wondering what, how did it hear? How did it go past the code enforcement? I mean, the planning commission. Go ahead. Well, actually, the, the, the question was, should they be here at the planning commission? They asked to be on the agenda, and so rather than denying them being on the agenda, we're allowing them to come here. And if they need to go somewhere else, then you can tell direct, but we didn't want them to feel like they've been stolen by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, I'm Bill Miles, same with business, Miles Real Estate. About a year ago, Grayson Foreman, back there in the blue shirt, sold Ms. Paulo a lot adjacent to the soda school. It's a good lot, uh, with a old pool on there, some pool, I think the house had burned, and Ms. Paulo purchased that. Then, we give folks a speech at closing when we sign our documents, and that speech includes, if you need us for anything, give us a call. And that's why we're here. So here's what I would like to say to you. Uh, we don't teach, we like being a good neighbor everywhere we go. And we don't want any ill will between us or clients, any city municipality. We're blessed to do business all up and down a few counties through here, and it's important to us to maintain our relationships. So we talked to Ms. Paulo. She's expressed a willingness to resolve these issues. Don't know about all the communications that happened to get us here. There's multiple things that Mr. Woodridge would like to be cleaned up. Grayson and I visited Mrs. Paulo on her property. We see there's an old, the old pool is still there. They've removed part of the fence. I suggested, if it's a bad suggestion, it's mine, that she finish that fence around the pool that was there, and she knocked part of it down, and hopefully that will get that issue resolved. There is a tree that fell over during the storm that I suggested she cut up with a chainsaw or have it done and get a burn permit from the city to burn those logs up. That's one of the part of the complaint. I believe she's done some mowing, some trimming. Since then, we do need some clarification on the size of the hedges, overgrown hedges were mentioned. And again, what I proposed to Ms. Paulo, that I would come down here and ask y'all for, is some time to complete this in steps, and maybe report back to Mr. Woodridge, which, hey, I've got this done in a reasonable manner, a timely manner. If we can get that commitment from Ms. Paulo, Mr. Paulo to do that. And, Mr. Bell, if we're in the wrong place, I'll, I'll make the correction. We'll go somewhere else. We just wanted to be heard, and thank y'all for getting us in, particularly at the last minute. Does what I've said sound reasonable?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Etherly. Uh, what was asking me was about, and the question is, I'm reviewing emails, this tiny house, uh, I have never, to my knowledge, talked to Ms. Paulo. I have advised Mr. Woodridge. Urban planning, Jim Montaglin with Urban Planning, uh, has always advised the planning commission that they needed an ordinance or something. The city has nothing on the books about tiny houses. The concern is the square footage and the minimum square footage for state and federal law as to fire protection and the minimum square footage of a tiny house. We have not defined that by ordinance, and the planning commission has not taken it up. And so that's why Mr. Woodridge has not issued her any right to be on the, in the property. Uh, many of them, uh, the city of Fayetteville looks at like a minimum of a hundred and twenty square feet. Other, other municipalities look at something like that. Uh, but the city's code is solid on it, and the advice that the council was, not council, planning commission would get it, is that you need to have an ordinance in place first to, 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 to establish what's your minimum square footage going to be. Uh, because tiny houses currently don't meet our fire code, and we have not made a ordinance about tiny houses. They are very popular. They're a new trend as to what cities need to do. Uh, but the planning commission probably needs to take this up and bring it up to you all. Uh, at this point, she's without sewer because the code enforcement want to approve the tiny house, uh, being in the city. That's, that's, that's where we are. But I think the planning, planning commission meets tomorrow? Tomorrow's the second Wednesday, right?
Yes, sir.
It's like trailers now, or what's their classification?
It's based on the square footage. It's not, it's not a trailer. To my knowledge, I haven't seen any picture, but it's not a trailer to my knowledge. My understanding is it was just a tiny house.
It's more of a Dirksen barn building type of thing, uh, pre-manufactured, shipped out there to your lot, like a lot, like we see a lot of places. If you've been to wind lately, there's a, what was a trailer park that's pretty much a tiny home park now, made out of Dirksen buildings. Different people are producing them. They're easy to get, and they're affordable housing. They really caught on. And I believe the information Mr. Bell gave you was totally factual in that not many municipalities in this area have taken any action on whatsoever. It's something that's kind of slid through the cracks, for lack of a better term.
Right.
This is the first one, is it?
No, I thought it was the second one, I think. Okay. Let me check with code, I mean, planning commission, see when the next meeting is. I think we need to address it there and go ahead and address the issue altogether. Hold on just a second.
Well, I, I'll say this, if, if, tiny houses, if you all have been through wind, we got a whole, we get to the city, I got a whole lot of them, and they are, they are nice. I had the privilege of, of seeing, it's a whole area, maybe like twenty tiny houses, and they got a wa, they got a bed, washer, dryer. They are living here. They, they, they are nice. I mean, I ain't crazy about it. If you're going, go through wind, going to jumper, go through there, and it's a tiny house park. They got a two-bedroom, three- bedrooms. They got those, um, I wouldn't say portable, but those ductless units. And then they got a tankless water system. So they, they, they are nice. They are very nice.
Those mini splints work well in their.
Yes, they do. Yeah. I, I, I think in, in some of these, some of these areas, like, if you go to Elaine, a lady has, um, in Elaine, she's, like, she do Airbnbs, uh, in some of these areas that we got these lots, I think, doing blues fest, doing festival times. It'd be good to have some of those, so people can be, you know, have a place to stay, you know, if, you know, I think that, that's a.
Is there one or two in Springdale Room, uh, in the park or something?
It shouldn't be in it. That's when the crew properly.
They're not authorized if they are. I said, if they are, they're not authorized.
Mr. Miles, uh, she, the, the secretary says the fourteenth is the next meeting.
The fourteenth?
Planning commission.
I'll make myself available for that. I think you're out of time, Grayson, to direct. I'll make myself available for that.
What's, what's happening?
Six o'clock. I mean, it's five-thirty, five in this room.
I'll be here, and thank you. Could, I hate for her to be out there, because they are residing there without proper sewer facilities. Could we get a temporary, some temporary relief on that someone? Am I asking for too much?
It is. Give me a call number. I need to see what, what's way we look at it. Uh, Chief Staff, you give me my cell phone number, please.
I listen.
So we.
Thank you all. Anything for me before we leave? I appreciate y'all here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miles. All right. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we, we, we did a few things before six, so we moved down through a few things on the agenda, so I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, we've done the minutes, um, and if we go back to where we should be at this point, we done the minute and all the guests. Yeah, the minutes and all the guests. So the next item is, uh, under City Attorney, the Freedom Information Act, uh, was amended by Act five zero five of twenty-twenty-five, and it starts on page four of your packet. Um, there are several things in there, um, and some of that's important for you as legislators or members of the governing body, it gives you a little bit more clarity on what does that mean between two members of the governing body. Mr. Saint Columbia, something going on?
He said, he said page four.
Yes, page four.
Page four is the title.
Yeah, page five is. So a couple of things while they're getting ready. Uh, as you look at the act, anything that's underlined, that's been added to the law, anything that's got a line two through it, has been stricken from the law. And so you see on the first page, on page five, which is page one of the act, um, background and non-decisional information means, uh, information that is not deliberation. Uh, they define cybersecurity, which I don't think that's necessarily an issue for us. On page six, definition of deliberation means an exchange of information or opinion between two or more members of a governing body that seeks, disposes, or incites about a decision by a member of a governing body concerning any matter on which official action will forcibly be taken by the governing body, or solicits, disposes, or incites about support or opposition of a member of the governing body concerning any matter on which the official action will forcibly be taken by the governing body. Um, so what that seems to mean is that you can talk about, uh, city business, but you can't talk about it in such a way where you're trying to build support or build opposition to it. So if you're discussing more, what's the information, what are the facts, then that seems to be something that two council members can't get together to do without having to disclose that to, uh, the press, the public, and other council members. Uh, the governing body, of course, is under number seven. It means the governing body, a public entity, an informal meeting, means gathering two or more members of the governing body outside of a public meeting. It defines a public meeting as well, but of course, a public meeting is those official meetings that we have, um, as, as a governing agency. Uh, going over to page seven, it talks about a poll, um, and what that means. Again, it's, it's one of those things where you're trying to solicit support or opposition to an action that may be taken by a governing body that's going to be inappropriate. Uh, several years ago, the attorney, June, issued an opinion where, I think it was Fort Smith, the chief of staff or city manager, somebody, uh, went from council member to council member, uh, getting their support to see what they were going to do. And they called that a, uh, improper meeting. And the action that resulted from that was deemed illegal. So you can't do, uh, polls. Um, they define public entity, and then they come down here, thirteen A on page seven, and define a public meeting means a formal gathering together, and a special or regular gathering of a governing body, whether in person or remotely. Uh, but it does not include gathering together in person or remotely to discuss the settlement of a cause of action in a court-ordered alternative dispute resolution process, including of a cause of action in a court order, alternative dispute resolution process, including with our limitations, settlement conference of mediation. So formerly we had the, the opinion that you had to disclose mediation to the general public and they were invited to come. And now they changed that to make it clear that you do not have to do that. Um, on remote meetings, it seems as though the state general assembly decided that people who are on state boards, who may have to travel greater distances than local people, can meet remotely, but that you all can't.
That's right.
Um, and so that's here, remotely means through these meetings, telephone, video conferences, or video broadcasts, but somewhere here in the act, I don't remember specifically where, it defines who can meet remotely, where you can have somebody to come to the meeting remotely, but if they are remote, the people got to be able to see them and hear them, identify and know who they are and what they're doing. But that's not available to local school board, or local city council, local court members, as I read it, and I think the city attorney was echoing, uh, what I was saying in that regard. I think those are the, the biggest, but of course we do have, as we have been doing in this city for a while, that would do this for any of these public meetings, and I think that includes, uh, AMP, airport, planning, and any other commis, committee or commission that's meeting. The meetings have to be recorded, maintain their recording for up to a year, I believe it is. Um, and so at one point, several years ago, we had Mr. Jim Riley to go to all the meetings and make recordings and keep them restored for the city. I don't know what we're doing at this point, other than the council meeting. We do have, uh, this present, preservation. Uh, we actually have it on StreamYard, which is a streaming service. Uh, it streams it to Facebook Live and it's live on Facebook, it's stored there, and it streams also to YouTube, and it's stored there. I don't think we save it locally. Uh, and maybe something we have to, uh, look into and make sure that it stays available for that one year that we require to have it.
Now, Chief Staff, the portion you're talking about is on page twelve of one twenty-nine, it's page eight of the bill. Uh, at, at the very bottom, it says, other than governing bodies, municipalities, counties, a public school district, a governing body may adopt a policy permitting members of the governing body to attend a public meeting remotely. That's a section that you're talking about that was added.
So where it says other than, that means you all are excluded, so you got a meeting person.
That's at the very bottom of page twelve. It's page eight of the bill.
Um, there's also a new restriction on the executive session. Um, the way I'm reading it, I may be reading it conservatively, we got two other lawyers in the room who may read it a little differently, but formerly on the executive session, you can go into executive session by declaring that you're going into that for one of the four things, hiring, firing, promotion, and demotion. I think the way it reads now, you have to declare which of those things you're going into executive session for. Um, and I, I, I'll find that shortly, but that's what the new act says. And I can't tell you when this one is, uh, effective either, because it didn't, it does not have an emergency clause, so it become effective after they said ninety days, sign they die. And sign they die is when they do the full recess and then you go ninety days after that, so it may be August or something before this law is actually effective. Um, but that executive session part, and this is what they're calling a compromise on the Freedom of Information Act. We've had several things going back and forth about changes to the law that grew out of some of the things that the new government, uh, was encountering when she took over, uh, that led to all kinds of newspaper reports about actions in state government. Uh, does anybody have any questions about any of this stuff that I pointed out so far? I don't see the executive session. Uh, Mr. Chief of Staff, the executive session portion starts on page ten. Around line twenty, before going into executive session, called under subdivision C one A, uh, run number I of this section, a governing body shall state publicly which specific listed, which specific purpose listed in subdivision C one A, run number one of this section is the basis for the executive session. And that, that section starts up, up a little bit at line sixteen, considering the employment, appointment, promotion, given disciplining or resignation of any public officer or employee. So I'm saying, yes, assuming that's what you're going into the executive session for. Also on that page in line four is what I was kind of referencing, governing body shall, um, punish the most current agenda for the public meeting upon request and shall publish the most current agenda for the public online if the governing body or public entity, uh, if governments maintain a website or social media page at least three days before a regular public meeting and at least two hours before any emergency or special public meeting. And since that's underlined, as I was telling you, anything that's underlined was added, that's new law. And this is not effective yet, it become effective ninety days, sign they die.
This on page ten of one twenty-nine, starting in line four. Yes, sir. Starting in line four. It also has in, in, uh, the next paragraph, it says a requirement of subdivision B three B, uh, uh, it's not for the government, heading up to the, to the, to the, to the. So that is a change. We've always historically said we have to stick to the public agenda, et cetera, but therefore I, um, the, 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 at least for me.
While y'all looking at the, looking at the, uh, for the packet being delivered as late as it will, uh, we had multiple problems, and this is by way of explanation, not excuse. Um, but, but we couldn't, the items printed, um, and one of, I don't know what the, the printing, I think he's had a time until he got it to print out and then made the copies, but we used it, tell the computer to print and go pick it up off the front and we couldn't. Every time we were sending it, it would jam up. In, in, in the internet portion, it'd jam paper. It's like, it would print a few pages out and, and then it wouldn't print all the kind of stuff. Okay, so that's those items. Any questions about Freedom Information Act? All right, so the next item, it looks like will be page twenty-nine, ordinance permitting comp time. And I, I, this is just food for thought at this point, I think. Uh, at some point we're going to have to get some at it, uh, but it's just, uh, a very rough draft of, of an ordinance, try to deal with what we're facing. And it's basically written to present a comp time policy that the governing body or the city council will adopt, uh, that's consistent with the Fair Labor Standards Act, which allows, uh, non-police and fire, uh, employees to accumulate up to two hundred and forty hours of compensatory time and police officers and firefighters to accumulate up to four hundred and eighty hours of compensatory time. Um, right now, your handbooks on, in section four point, six point one and four point six point two, found on pages thirty-three and thirty-four, the current handbook requires that overtime be paid as it is earned. So that's something we can probably come back to once you consider, uh, the next item, which is the administration's proposal to reduce spending on payroll. That starts on page thirty-three. Um, it, it may be easier if I just kind of read through it, um, and we can talk about it in whatever way you want to do that, but the, the city of Hamilton West Haul has been, uh, has a, it's just, has a payroll, which has for many, eighty percent of expenditures. Based on the revenue, may have, that would be possible for new, for new, over nineteen related expenses and interventions, the loss of county sales tax revenues, which were redirected back to the county, Phillips County, by election to build a new jail detention center and lagging sales taxes, which have, have not dramatically over the years. That redirection fund has caused the city to lose seven hundred thousand dollars per year since twenty twenty, we probably lost more than three point five million dollars. Presently, the treasury reports reflect the trend of increasing unpaid liabilities and items like taxes, retire contributions, and accounts with vendors. We must arrest and reverse the trend for the health and safety of our citizens. Without a health and sustaining city government, our citizens will be negatively impacted. That means that we must be fiscally responsible so that we can repair streets, clean ditches, clear and maintain rights of ways, provide trash receptacles, provide trash dumpsters, provide trash collections, provide debris collection, alleviate flash flooding in certain areas, maintain alleys while providing adequate police and fire protection. Uh, overtime, several things will have to change in order to effective, to be effective financially. We spent nearly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on overtime last year. Overtime comprised seven point eight percent of the total payroll expenditures. About two thirds of overtime was used by the police and fire departments. Reduction in or elimination of overtime will improve the city's bottom line by at least one half of a million dollars. Therefore, I'm proposing that we, as a city, use compensatory time in lieu of overtime. This requires city council approval. It shows a graph there reflecting the seven point eight percent of the overtime out of the total expenditures on salaries. Ninety-two point two percent was the rest of the salaries. And comp time, once comp time, um, is approved, we can significantly reduce our cost of overtime and the fringe benefits connected with overtime payments. This will have to, uh, be changed in our handbook, but it's already permissible in state and federal law. Comp time means that rather than being paid overtime for hours worked, the employees will be granted time off with pay equal to the amount of comp time hours acquired. The comp time hours accumulate at one point five hours for each hour. This way, the employees, the night time, the fire, but the ultimate pay does not change. Police officers and firefighters may legally acquire up to four hundred and eighty comp time hours, all other city employees may acquire up to two hundred and forty. Comp time hours are accumulated at the rate of unpaid overtime. The salaries in the police and fire departments should be adjusted upward, placing higher premium on all of their hours, but lower operational costs on the city with the operating, with the appropriate staff. The elimination of overtime could create a savings of at least a hundred dollars a year. A fifteen percent payroll reduction, Michelle, that payroll for twenty twenty-four included over eight million dollars in payroll expenditures. That also equaled approximately eight percent of all expenditures. This will teach, spend sixty-five, all just for opportunity to pay rent payables, past due payables, and possibly adjusting compensation of small and lean workforce. The table below, named year to date, January through December twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, reflects the payroll related expenditures as documented in the history report for the city of Hamilton West Haul for that same time period. This report includes all departments except the water and sewer department. Those departments are reported in separate report and have separate audits done for them. The treasurer recently reported that those departments on much better footing since the rate increase has been in effect. The labor in those departments represent approximately thirty of the total expenditure for those departments, we're talking about water and sewer at this point. Those departments have planned increases in rates, i.e. revenues, for January twenty twenty-six and January twenty twenty-seven. One of those is the rate increase, and one of those is cost of living adjustment. And the chart is showing the expenditures that come straight from the treasury report, what does the total, eight million, two hundred and four, two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents in salaries and benefits to pay two hours employees, about ten and some odd, uh, hundred thousand dollars in, uh, expenditures for the city. So we're spending eight dollars out of ten on employee and employee related expenditures. The administrative department will make cuts in expenditures as well. However, some of the expenditures in administrative department or section of the treasury report goes to benefit of all departments. Strong consideration must be given to reducing administration costs, but must be tempered by the fact that some costs are unavoidable and not related to personnel as may be other sector. That's what I'm saying, what I, one million seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty cents of a cent. The don, cheese, eight hundred thousand, yeah, about twenty seven, thirty thousand person, about thirty four, uh, uh, the most, uh, plus twenty five, 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 five,[1796.12] trees. Sitting in a formula, the city form collect about a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh that money was paid first of each month to the general fund. With this contribution, the city's bottom line should uh improve by one point six million dollars. The water department, of course, has current liability of one point nine million dollars, which if addressed should bring in revenue to help the city's bottom line as well. The legend of the charts displayed below follow this clockwise pattern. Administration code for fire, legal, park, police, sanitation, street, landfill and tourism. The police department comprised forty-four percent of the overtime. And we're looking at the uh chart that's shown on page thirty-nine. The fire department, twenty-three percent. Those two departments comprise sixteen percent all over twenty twenty-four. Now, one thing that's concerning is the fact that while administration salary comprised only seventeen percent of the payroll, those salaries comprise twenty-eight point three percent of the cost of fringe benefits. Uh the fire department salaries represented twenty-seven percent of the payroll, but the benefits were thirty-two point nine percent of the cost. These numbers are from the treasury report from two thousand twenty-four, which includes the complete fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, which is fiscal and accounting year. Now, the fire department, the reason that it it benefits or costs more is I believe they don't pay any social security, so that money is sent in as part of retirement or what would have been social security, right?
They don't pay social security more.
They don't pay either.
Social security or what?
Medicare, they don't pay.
Okay, and but the contribution sends it to lawful?
Yes.
Most required to send it to lawful. Alright, so turn the page to the next chart. Um and let's just outline what 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 happened with the salaries in two thousand twenty-four. Uh so that that blue uh that's the administration. One four percent forty-four minute, uh one one three, I believe that's fire. Uh skipping around to the one million is police. And then you go around that. It didn't put all the numbers because they were different cost of for fire as poor as they um and the cost of fringe benefits in that neck uh on the bottom forty. On all for fifteen percent. Department expenses on payroll will line up as follows. Fire department, twenty-seven point six percent, administration, eight point eight, police, seven point two, uh sanitation, twelve point seven and street, ten point seven. And the others were significantly lower. They were smaller departments, whether it's park or tour or business. Now, we are willing to whatever options is lead to if I work for a trash on four, they work with a ten percent reduction. Be around by this workout thirty-two hours over day. Still, because of a staff here on certain days of the week. Cleric staff to alternate Mondays and Fridays off to the office and open. And that the burden and benefits are shared amongst the staff. Salary personnel, even those actually salaried under the flister standards, will be required to manage additional duties as assigned. We need to consider the number of hours required for an employee to continue uh to qualify, what it should say, it's equality, to qualify for as well as time. Those hours may not attend by the time the meeting is Tuesday night. Um and the last thing, we got this three-day trash collections uh route. We can achieve some savings by going to a three-day route. And I won't read that to you, but it's basically what that what that is. And somewhere is for have set up hypothetically actually to decide to go to the three-day route. Uh and go with that wish you like that would pay. Um like this time on fifty-six on fifty-seven. So I put page fifty-seven. So this one um may be a little harder for you to 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 read depending on what you're looking for. But this is the the these so in alphabetical order on this, we're looking at page fifty-seven. Uh route one would be Tuesday, two would be Wednesday, Thursday. Now, the number that's we're looking, we see Aaron it has a one. Currently, it is in route one and under the proposal, it would be in route one as well. Um what happens with route one is that it extends uh further. I flipped over to page fifty-eight and I go down to Russell Street. Um it's currently on route two. It would go to route one under the proposal. That's kind of how you read it, where they are and where they would be. Now, if you flip over to page sixty-three, it's the same thing, but it's organized differently. On page sixty-three, it organizes all streets alphabetically. So a person doesn't have to know where they are. They just know their street name and look for it. And you can find what route's turned on and what route we're proposing to put you on. Um again, looking at the top right there, we got Bale Street, which is up by Liberty off of Perry Street. It's currently on route three. It would go to route two. If I flip the page to page sixty-four, at the top left, Cook Street is on route one or route three. And across the top there is Fountain Street, which is on route three, but it would go to route two. Uh so basically, what would happen is southwest Helena and practically all of all of South Helena and most of North Helena would move to Wednesday trash collection as opposed to um part Thursday, part Wednesday, part Thursday. And then the route would come on around. It also sort of follows your ward map. Now, why do we use the ward map? Because the ward maps identify where people live and put nearly equal numbers of people in each ward. And so we got nearly equal people in each ward. And you're picking up the trash, you ought to pick up nearly equal amounts each of those three days. And if we don't get it on those three days, and the ward map is on page fifty-five. If we don't get it on those three days, because we got to make up day of Monday or Friday uh to deal with it. It also keeps us more likely from running into holiday uh collection issues. Uh because many of your holidays fall on the on on the weekend. But to the extent they don't, we got the other two days to deal with it if we need to. So that's kind of what that proposal is. Anybody got any questions about any of that?
I do. I I started out with just just reading actual ordinance itself. And um when you mentioned, okay, let me go back to it. You say, okay, so a city may permit as long as the total accumulated hours fall beneath the threshold number of two forty and four eighty. And then once the uh employee accumulates two forty or four eighty hours, any overtime earned will be paid at the thin current rate of pay multiplied by by one and a half. Why not just continue to pay them comp time? I mean, I don't. Am I reading that correctly?
The the law don't allow you to accumulate more than four hundred and eighty hours of comp time. So so what you would do in terms of go on eighty hours.
I see.
Yeah. But if they get four hundred and eighty, you need them to work, then you have to pay them whatever time they work beyond that.
Accumulation of
Right.
Okay, got you.
Yeah. So so let's say they worked the in the police department a forty-eight hour week. That's five hours overtime. The police overtime don't start at forty-four.
Okay.
The first forty-three is straight time. So that's five hours. And they got five hours times fifty weeks. Then you got two hundred and some hours. So you give them time off or they still you they can still accumulate up to four hundred and eighty
I see.
hours doing it that way.
I see.
Uh and that's part of part of the reason I'm suggesting comp time.
Yeah.
Is is I feel fairly comfortable with appropriate mon- monitoring that you can raise some salaries and take comp. And they still get the same amount of money whether they're working or not, right? Um but you can budget better based on it. You have an idea from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, what you want to pay. You got four hundred, you got ten police officers, you're paying them forty-five thousand dollars, people just four fifty thousand dollars. Uh right now, you know, we don't know what we're going to pay the police officers because we having to pay them overtime and they're running the uh it's extended overtime, wearing them out. Uh and we 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 afraid to move the salaries up because ultimately it's going to be impacted by how much overtime they get. And so that that kind of takes that away. Uh and just as an aside, we have police officers resigning to go to other departments and stuff as we speak. We're going to have to do something pretty quickly uh to get some police officers and to retain the ones that we have.
Uh Mr. Chief of Staff. Uh you loosely term that they still get the same amount of money whether they work or not. We understand what you're saying for the list, for the sake of releasing all this, will you explain that further? I said you usually you loosely use the term they can get the same amount of money whether they work or not on the comp time. Uh we understand what you mean, but could you further explain yourself to the listeners?
There there's two meanings there. The first one is under the comp time. Um comp time is the the employee is off work but being paid because they've already worked overtime. So if they work, uh again, let's say they work a forty-eight hour week, they got five hours overtime, right? So in comp time, that's seven and a half hours that they should be permitted off with pay at some point. And that's so they get paid for that time, they'd be off. Um not required to work more time to to make up for that. They'd be off during that time. That's what I mean by they'd be paid whether they work or not uh in in that sense. I don't mean we paying people who are not working.
Right.
Uh but yeah, that that's how the comp time part would work. So it'd be that seven and a half hours that we'd have to uh compensate them with.
You compensate them with overtime for the hours they worked over.
Right.
Yeah.
At a time and a half.
Yeah.
So it helps you somewhat with scheduling and stuff of that nature, I would think. Uh and and it's 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 a mixed bag. You you kind of got to find the happy medium. Uh but in in terms of comp time, one of the things is, and I I suggested at the last meeting that that you all, the council members, encourage the mayor to surround herself with with good competent staff that does what needs to be done. One of the things you need is a regular report on comp time because you don't want comp time to bite you. Uh because employees can go back up to two, if you are egregious, up to three years to sue you for unpaid overtime under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And then they get a turn fee on top of that. When you just do it right, then they don't have that option. And so you want to keep that monitored. You want reports on it, know where you are, how many hours people have, all of it, the workers.
Currently, in all of the departments, is there a system so if an officer or someone, a police officer, a fire professional working in the fire department, wherever, landfill, it it doesn't matter. When they are working overtime, because I'm assuming that each one of the department, correct me if I'm wrong, all of the department heads would have a schedule that they preset at the start of a work week or the start of a pay period. And so if overtime is requested, I'm assuming it would be if there's a big accident or there is something going on with with crime or what happened, right? So how how are we managing that right now? I mean, if you're going to be asking for overtime for a fireman, I would assume that, and I'm just using them, I I this is no slam against them. I would think that in that week, in that pay period, you will have scheduled your firemen, you know, straddled, you know, sectioned them out. And so a big fire happens and then you have to call in. Do are they submitting the overtime report with an attachment that says this is the reason why we called an in for this? I mean, how how are they managing that right now?
Okay, so the department's going to be a little different. So let's start with the fire department because I think theirs is the easiest one. They work every third day, twenty-four hours. And you you count up to up to twenty-eight hours and and measure the overtime. And so just if they work all the days in their twenty-eight hour period, there's some overtime that get in a way if you don't require them to take off. Uh and so then what they do is when there's a fire, they can tone it out is what they call, where they page or whatever, how they contact each other now. I don't know what the system is specifically. But they send it out and all the people come depending on the next other fire. If it's a grass fire by grandma's house in the ditch, you know, a couple guys. But if Matt Night Flywood catches on fire for the third time or the Holiday Star Motel catches on fire for the fifth time, they kind of called everybody out. And I don't say that to be funny, but I mean, that's what they've been doing. People have been burning Matt Night Flywood and Holiday Star Motel. And I don't know, and and of course, Westside, Westside caused fire two, three times. Um and some of that is people, I think, who see the value in the in the in the jumps, the refuge. So it's burning down and then they go in and collect the iron and copper and the wire and all of that and go sell it. Uh that's what's happening with a bunch of it. We've had, and I know this is an aside, this doesn't quite answer your question, but I'm coming back to it. We've had at least two incidents where somebody has cut copper telephone line over twenty-four hundred feet over by KGIW radio station. Live copper wire line for the cell phone company, cut it down uh to go and sell it. And then right across in front of where former mayor Joanne Smith lives along Oakland, they cut about eight hundred feet. Looked like it came down the side of the ridge on the four brothers and ladders and cut it, but it didn't get it quite completed before somebody came to the end there when the phone came to replace it. But we got scavengers who were trying to collect this iron and copper and stuff and trying to sell it. But that's the fire department. Now, the police department uh is encountering overtime and and of course, we permitted overtime because they um they're short staff. Uh that's a a big part of, they're working twelve-hour shift, so that's kind of built in. But if we go to the the landfill, uh we got seven people permitted in your in your budget. Because the landfills had so many complications with equipment and all kinds of stuff, it's about to authorize uh Bruce, who was a salaried employee, to get overtime. And I haven't been monitoring that, but he gets overtime. Um but Mr. Wilson would be able to to better answer how you deal with landfill overtime. And some of that depends on rain and other conditions going on in the landfill. But certainly, they can, there's a schedule and they can tell you what that might be. That's the landfill. Sanitation department, uh the hours ought to be fairly uh static. There is seven to three or six to four, whatever the hours are. Sometimes the front-end loader trucks, they run into more, or it's just one now. We got two guys kind of sharing it and splitting up shifts and doing that kind of stuff. So it depends on what happens and what they could get. Um and so they may get some overtime. Um if I look, remember looking at the last uh overtime report, it was in those those drivers primarily. And the street department, similarly, uh we got one grapple truck and two guys operating and that they both have been getting overtime. But I heard Clarence this morning uh send one home and tell him to come back tomorrow kind of thing and said we're just going to have to do it differently, but uh we're going to come back, we're actually going to let them fix the other truck. But they they've been getting overtime, but the other guys have been, I think, under five hours of overtime is what they've been getting. But it depends on rain, grass growing, stuff like that, what they do, this might be. But yes, the department head knows at the beginning of the week, I got this many people who I expect to show up to work this many hours. Now, how it gets sometimes beyond that, uh for lack of being the other way of describing, be lack of man, poor management, lack of insight or something like that, so. And I don't say that to be down on any particular person, I'm just saying that overtime is something that can be managed. Uh I worked at McDonald's with the two guys at the head of the table over there for seven years. And you know, they loved me, but they didn't like me without the manager McDonald's. Um and it's just one of those things where you have to manage people, manage circumstances and deal with them. And, you know, we can do better. Let's just say that.
I think the one issue that you're going to do is sincerely digest this report by the mayor and chief of staff. Uh there are numerous issues that we need to to arrest pretty quickly. Because the city cannot continue to engage the way it's going forward. And this is a serious matter and it requires your serious time.
I mean, all the pieces that we presented to you, I'm in favor.
I mean, all the pieces that we presented today, I'm in favor of all of them, because we got to do something pretty quickly. Plan that I submit, when the, the chief of staff submits to you all, it's a good one. I think we ought to, I'm gonna let you all have the time to look at it, and I'm for it, every piece of it. Uh, we gotta move quickly, uh, because I want the city to pay its bills on time.
Just as a point of information, uh, our payroll, we are paid nine days after the close of the pay period. So payroll is this Friday. And if you count backwards nine days, the payroll ended on whatever that Wednesday was, and a new one starts on Thursday. So as you're considering what you're gonna do, you want to try to time it, where we catch the beginning of the pay period. It'd be best. Now, if you started whenever you said, keep up. But it'd be better if we started at the beginning of the pay period. So it'd be some Thursday where it will start, uh, whatever we do.
I would also like to look a little bit closer, um, on page thirty-six. Um, you know, it, the part that says the administrative department will make cuts in expenditures as well. However, some of the expenditures in the administrative department are sectioned of the treasury for goes to the benefit of all departments. Strong consideration must be given to reducing administrative costs, but must be tempered by the fact that some costs are unavoidable and not strictly related to personnel, as may be the case for the sections of the city government. And so I think if we do go this route and we do work towards this, then I think that we should also make sure that our administrative staff shares, and I'm sure we will, in the cuts, just like everybody else, right?
Yes, so let me be a little bit more specific, uh, on that. Some of the, the locked-in expenses are elected people. I just didn't want to say it that way in there. Uh, let, elected people, uh, salary can be cut if they choose to. Take, you can't force them to take a cut, that's, 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 that's part of it. And then some of this stuff is gonna be like workers' comp and, and, and health insurance and other things that we don't get to negotiate on in the middle of the year.
I'd be one of those elected officials who would take the decision, okay? I've started, I, I started off, so, I mean, I know how to get out here and work, so I, I, whatever the city says, I need to take to make sure the city can do what it needs to do. I'd be the first to jump in, because I know how to get out here and work. I'll find an extra job, but to, but to get to, to, to show that I'm for saving the city, I, I'll take the cut. So I hope everybody's following suit with me, but I, I'd be the first one, because I want our city to be able to pay its bills, do things for its due to make sure people want to come to help, to live, and spend money here, so I, I, I'll take mine.
And so that's, some of that stuff is those other expenses, not just salaries, but workers' comp, health insurance, and whatever the other things are that we don't get to negotiate. That's, that's, so when I say administration, Mr. Turner can tell you better what all is in there, but it's not just people, not just salaries. But from a staff standpoint, I believe we got, uh, certainly me and Miss Ever Jean, uh, Miss Coates, Miss, uh, Evans, Miss Moody, who's custodian, Mr. Woodridge and Miss Will, Williams were in code enforcement, uh, City Attorney Secretary, and two people in the, in the clerk's office, that would be the staff that are considered administrative staff. Uh, and he's, he's telling me courts, courts is in administration, Mr. Turner. So the district court people are in there too. And I don't know what you can do about their salaries. You know, there's been some stuff back and forth, whether they're city employees, they're state employees. And so it just depends. The, the two attorneys up there can tell you what you should do in that instance. I, I don't remember, I had studied, but, so courts is in administration too, that's, that's another one of those things. Right, we, we talked about, I, I told you the, the electives, but I was just trying to name the actual human bodies that are in administration, as to who they were.
I like the idea that we are addressing this. I, I really do. I know we have a lot to flesh out, right? Uh, but I like the idea that we are actually looking at.
Yes, ma'am. Um, there was something, there's a base pay ordinance in this package. Um, we, I shortened it, uh, and hopefully we can get it passed, but I shortened it also just to make it a cleaner document. I can't remember toward the back. Base pay ordinance on page eighty-four. And basically, don't, don't hold me strictly to this, but basically, all it does is it changes, uh, two, two sets of positions in the police department. It makes the number fifteen police officers in those sections of the base pay ordinance. And it sets a salary, as previously discussed, at forty thousand dollars for the officer who is fully certified, and thirty-five thousand dollars for the officer who is, uh, newly hired and hasn't been to the academy. But of course, with the, if, if we go to comp time, I'm suggesting that you change that number. But at, at, at this point, you know, this is what we've been discussing. And, and also, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we have some police officers who are here, and they heard what, what I've said and what you've said tonight. And I've been asked twice to let you know that some of them would like to address you if you would hear from them. And I told them I would tell them, you all, that they wanted to speak to you, so. Chief Bell told me in my ears, as did Officer Sanders. And it's about what we presented tonight, it's not an executive session type thing. We do have two requests for executive session, that's different. They're just police officers, those are requests. I don't know if you're gonna honor them, but I'm just taking those as a request.
Yes, if, if I may, Chief of Staff, well, St. Clement is asking, and some of y'all may have the same question, is this base pay on page eighty-four for police only? Uh, Article one on this says, police, patrol officer first class eight, patrol officer interest seven, that gets a salary of forty thousand or thirty-five thousand. This only amends the base pay as relating to the police.
It doesn't affect anybody else?
Not, not, it's only police.
Not at this point. I took, I took everything out except for the police position.
Yeah.
To keep it simple.
Yeah, we talked about this two months ago, and have they hired anybody yet?
Chief Bell is saying, what, other Chief Bell? He said, no, we haven't.
Have not.
No.
They need the base pay. They need the base pay.
So they haven't hired anybody, but he lost two or three.
Well, they haven't got anybody that we can't hire.
What they needed to.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm curious, by doing this, is this gonna help us? Chief? Have you got somebody in line, or got somebody ready to go work?
Yes, to answer that question, yes, we do. We're waiting for, uh, human resources to take some action as well as, uh, getting some clarity on the psychological exam that we need to, uh, move forward on. However, some of the certified people that we had talked to previously, their cities increased their salaries to match hours or more beyond, so they're staying put. They were watching on the television, and they saw where we took actions to recruit some, uh, some. Yes, it does, yes. Yes, yes.
How, how many officers?
I don't know if you want to talk about that. Certainly the council should know.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying, not saying how many, I'm just saying, how many, at, at a comfortable rate, hey, how many, like, will it take twelve officers? Or, or one take eight officers, and one take ten officers, and maybe four part-time officers? To, as, what I'm trying to do is so that we can be competitive. If we have a, like I said, we say it's forty thousand dollars, right, for, for eight people. So, so I see here, so if you do ten and do maybe six part-time, you know, you, because you, if you got on a, on a shift, you got maybe five officers, four officers. But you, no, 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 no. I know what you're saying, but I'm just saying, I, I, I wouldn't say no to somebody, I would, well, what I'm saying is, if you had, how many officers on, on shift do, would you need? On, on a typical day, how many officers would you have? How many would you have on a shift, Chief Bell? What, this, this is a, how many officers would you have on a, on shift eight?
Honestly, to be, to be honest with you, to be really effective, to do what we really need to do, I would say five officers per shift.
And so, and that's three shifts, so that's, that's, that's fifteen officers, right? So if, if we got those fifteen officers, and you break them up, you know, have a comfortable salary, then you get your, your part-time people, you get probably like, like six part-time people who, who will come in to work, right? But, but it would do, it still will reduce your number once you find out what would it take? Because if you got A shift, it's got five officers, and you got four part-times coming in to leave lunches and things like that, and, or then you have B shift the same way, and C shift. So there's seven to three, three to eleven, and eleven to seven. And you find out what comfortable number would it, you know, and, and, and pay-wise, that you ain't gotta worry about, you know, these folks getting, you know, you've got comp time now in place, that you know the folks can't run rogue with this overtime. So you gotta find a comfortable salary, and say, hey, listen, this is what it is, this is what we're gonna pay, and, and, and attract some people to come here, and you ain't gotta worry about all this overtime, because after your eight hours, you go home, that's it. If we need, if, if part-time people, if we need them, we'll call them in before we call the full-time person back in. Because once the full-time person gets their hours, and they see, oh, I mean, they.
It doesn't work that way, ma'am.
I mean, I, I, and, and, and that, and it may not work. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, because if you don't ask, you don't know. But most people, you know, I know the person don't do, come in eight hours and go home, there are things happen. But it, what I'm actually saying, we have to pay a comfortable salary to keep some folks here. We have to have some qualified people, knowledgeable people that know what they're doing. They, when you call me to do a report, you don't have any papers, say, you write the report, you do the report. Because the person, man, I can write, and V, and they probably try to tell you, and also got their skill that they can write the report out, have the person sign it, because a lot of reports just not, just people reports. But we have to find a way to, to say, hey, this is what we offer. Can we get you here? Can we keep you here? And I know when people hear money, like, oh, that's too much. But it, I mean, but if, if, if we pan it out in, in overtime, other things, we need to try to, what's the number? How many officers per shift that we need? And see, if we, if we even have to do a trial run, when we get these folks to see, what does it take? Because if, if you got, when the people get, if people get out here at three o'clock, you know, they probably start coming in like at two-thirty, and the other folks start getting ready to come in, the part-time folks can man the street until you get to the, until the other shift comes in. I, I can't tell you how to do the job, because I'm not an officer, but in my mind, that's where I see it, but you've been in law office over forty years, so you would know, but.
You on track, you on track, except for the part-time people, they are limited, because they have full-time jobs elsewhere. So they're limited in what they can do for us, and the hours that they can work, or the time of the day that they can work.
There's one other exception for part-time, if they're not full-time certified, they only have a part-time certification, the maximum hour they can work is twenty-four. So that's another issue that, uh, about part-time.
Yeah, but which, which you, even, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, is if we have that number that we know what kill, what is, like, if you got an officer who has all his credentials, and he said, well, I work in this department, I want to come to help you. If I can get forty-five thousand dollars, I'll come and, and I work. That, that's some knowledge that you got on, that you know that you ain't gotta worry about nobody doing that. That they know how to, uh, come and do the job. So you want to get those people in here, so you get, have they come to these departments, and people feel safe. You want to get somebody who's like, who ain't gonna play, oh, I know you, go ahead, I'll. So at some point, that's what I'm trying to get. What, what is the, the number and a good start way, way to take to get coming people in?
Not, not to cut the mail off, or the chief or anybody else, you know. The committee committee ran last week, got a boot in the heart. The chief came in, asked for it down now, that's what he asked for, right? That's what the audit said. And let's try that. You gotta do something else, do something else.
What, what, I was, I was, I was just saying, I understand what you mean. But, but let's, but I agree, let's see what we can get first.
Here, here's a practical problem. The practical problem, the chief has four, and the chief of staff is right. And at this point, you have a financial issue that you're all concerned about. And there has to be a balance. You have to pay officers stay. At the rate we've been going over the past eighteen months, we're quickly moving towards not having another police department. I want to sound that alarm to you. Because the number of officers you're having has been dwindling and dwindling and dwindling. I know this is a tough decision for you all to make, because practically, you're saying, well, we just talked about cuts. Why are we talking about giving an increase in salary? And so you have that balance, and, and I would lean towards the mayor, the chief of staff, and, and, and the city clerk. I mean, the mayor, the city treasurer, and the city clerk, to give you all great advice financially. But at this point, you have to have, everybody's raising their salaries everywhere. Uh, I hear the alarm that you all are sounding, uh, just your facial expressions, that we're talking about cutting, that we need to cut, but also you have to balance, you're quickly moving towards your numbers are being constantly dwindling. And that is a serious issue, and they're going other places. And so I would invite you all to discuss this and go forward. Yes, sir, Dr. Wong.
I didn't think there was anything else to discuss.
Yeah, I thought we were, I thought we were for this.
In order to increase the salary level paid, pass the ordinance.
Right, exactly.
I would say, though, you, you can't do this unless you fix that. It, we, we already know what the numbers are. If you don't fix that other thing, and you do this, you know you have no room for error. So I don't think you can do one and not do the other.
You mean the overtime issue?
It's not just overtime, it's the whole payroll issue. If, if the whole payroll issue is not fixed, and, and you do this, I mean, I, I don't know, what would we have for error? So, wi- without a solution to fix the payroll problem, the debt issue, you gotta do them both at the same time. And so, I mean, there, there's a proposal on the table. I'm not crazy about, I like some parts of it, some parts of it I don't like about it. But at the same time, we gotta fix the, the, the cash flow issue. Boy, this would wreck us totally. I mean, because you're talking about doubling, nearly doubling some, some people's salaries. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, man.
Mr. Turner correcting that. I remind you that the city treasurer gave the opinion that it's budget neutral. But also, uh, we also want to, uh, remind you, I got a, I got a call almost every day from Mr. Lee about the jail fees and the county dependent litigation. At some point, before the meeting, I'll come back to that, but I'll go ahead and let you all finish this discussion.
Can we, can we come up with a, uh, can we settle, can we come up with a settlement?
Yes, but the hospital didn't say so.
Oh, God.
I mean, as an option, I'm not crazy about to see that, but as an option, the ordinance can be adopted. The ordinance didn't fund anything, doesn't fund it. Is anybody who would be affected by the change in ordinance? Anybody who's in the department right now? Anybody know? I guess not. You don't have any entry-level people.
Can we get patrolman first class?
No.
Okay.
But my, my question would be, as we go forward, do we, do we hold off on moving forward until some other point?
Well, yeah, my, my, my question was, is there anybody at the level?
No.
Okay, so.
Not at this point.
We could pass the ordinance and not fund the positions until the rest, the, the, the comprehensive plan is in place. Of course, the department has to understand that just because the ordinance is passed, they don't have money to hire people at that, at that rate.
I thought we had a cop grant, the, for new, for new, uh, import.
I thought we had a cop grant, uh, for new, for new, uh, employees.
Well. I mean, I don't, I'm not.
So I mean, the money part.
Well, I'm not able to speak to that, you, you need to make sure that it's available to, to start paying people. That, I mean, the people who know.
I mean, I should, what.
Yeah, that was.
What you said originally, that we had that cop grant.
I understand it's nine hundred thousand dollars in Washington somewhere, but they can answer that.
It's not available to draw down, you have to, to police department to send them some performance evaluations, performance, uh, reports. And so we can't move forward until that is done.
I didn't hear.
The police department needs to send us some performance reports, submit some performance reports, so we can't move forward until that's done.
You got them at your office?
I, I, I don't have the performance things, I thought Ms. Mills, uh, had them too, I'm not sure.
To qualify for a cop's grant?
It's not to qualify for it, it's to keep up with the reporting, they need to. We had five financial reports, and they have to, uh, have some performance reports and status reports. To see where our staffing and that, and.
Chief, you know what you're talking about?
Yeah, talk to Ms. Mills, she can. I can have that, that information, I just do the financial part of it, but she would have, uh, the. The information that you need to, uh, submit regarding the performance, uh, reports. I see what you're saying.
If I could break in for just a moment, uh, when we did our port authority, we didn't hear from any of the appointees. And, uh, Mr. West, Hon, to share our thoughts with you briefly, as he's getting ready to go, if we can allow him to do that, I would appreciate it.
I really want, I hate to interrupt you guys, cause you're doing some very important business, and I know that, I understand that. But I did wanna express to all of y'all my gratitude for having your faith in me to perform on that port authority. That's something that's been near and dear to my heart since I came back from college, which has been like almost ten centuries ago. But I'm really, really, really en- en- enthusiastic about being there. And I will work hard, and I promise you, I will not let any of you down. And my, my, uh, my phone's open anytime, if there's any issue, let me know, and I'll be more than happy to, uh. Discuss it and, and make a plan. Thank you all so very much, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good listening.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. If I may. But if I may, going back to, to, to the finance issue. When I was discussing with Ethel before, Mr. Horner spoke to her about it. I think that you all need to go ahead and adopt the ordinance. I also think that at the next city council meeting, the parts that you like about this plan, you need to adopt. Because every day I'm gonna get calls, Ms., Ms., Ms. Miller, I have not given you the report, but I'm getting calls every day about. I have thi- this debt we need to pay, this we need to pay, this debt to me, cause the debts are not being paid, I've been referred to me. And Miss Leag, you called me about the, the hospital, uh, not selling, and the county wants their money. The county, even, even though the county contracted with the state to, to run the jail. Uh, Clark Holland breathing down their throat said, I, I want our money. Uh, so, and I can tell you all the email last week, and, uh, he wanted something on, uh, Big River Trucks, uh. Sir?
I was gonna ask, was Clark House still around? Yeah, okay, please, okay.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, he's rounding up to, 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 for them to, uh, call regularly, cause I kind of, I was on conference call today with John Wilkinson and Phil Mann. And last week, and the week before, and they want the city council to decide how soon we're gonna pay the hundred fifty thousand dollars to hospital, and so. Yeah.
I have a question, office for the chief.
For the chief?
Yeah. This base pay ordinance, we're making eight first-class officers and seven patrol officers, fifteen. How many do we actually have right now?
That one is the only guy that has a public meeting from his friends in that room. But he can tell you after the meeting, if you don't mind. An officer that I have that.
I understand.
But if you have to take. But if less than fifteen.
Less than fifteen.
Just less than fifteen.
But so, we get money from my, just, hold it for nine, ninety dollars. And we. That show, police, trying to hire. That's what we about, two months ago.
But the, the other thing that I believe, you know, that is a plan, it creates room. When you, you were done, and, and have employees sharing like the health insurance and stuff like that. It creates revenue that's available to pay your credit, pay your police officers more money. Five dollars more money, you know, you have a smaller leaner staff, you can pay them a little more. If you, if you ain't with come time, it's even better for police.
Right, now that's police money, just for police, police, and that's why.
The money you're talking about from DC is for police reimbursement. Yes, sir. The reimbursement was, would have already on the police department, so when you get reimbursement back. You, 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 you can spend it on police department if you so de- decide, I just wanna be fair with you. You spend it on police department if you so decide, but because you're being reimbursed, that, that money is no longer restricted. Am I right, Mr. Tom?
Yeah, it can be used for any, any general purpose in the city.
But I would encourage you to the police department, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, how that works. Yeah.
What, what's, what's the body's pleasure on the base pay ordinance?
I think. And that, that doesn't mean that we automatically have that available. And then we need to plan to get back together, and let's deal with the other piece.
Well, it, it needs an amended, uh, budget proposal. Not proposal, but to amend the budget to, for the new, new number. But, yeah, a, a new appropriation. But the other thing is that, 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 that whatever is gonna bring us into line, revenue and expense-wise, has to be done. And I agree with Mr. Valley, we, we were talking over the corner, that, that's gotta happen pretty quickly.
My, my thoughts on your draft this night, in two weeks. What are the plans that you're gonna prove that the mayor's done, or you all have something to modify it, or whatever you all wanna do? Two weeks from now, it needs to be adopted, they need to flex the positions, so that the chief can. Increase the salaries, and they're gonna fund them two weeks from now. And, but you need to know what you're gonna cut, how you're gonna cut, and so on. So, the mayor has laid out a plan, and through the chief of staff, and you all can modify it however you want to, but. Two weeks from now, I think there needs to be action.
If we need to have a meeting before then, so we can discuss additional things you all like to see done, we can do, or. Take some, whatever you all want, we can, we can do that as well. I'm just trying to guess to what we can, we can stop saying. Things that we can't pay our bills, and those are things I wanna, people see that we're working toward that, so we can get people to wanna come to help. So if we have to meet, uh, Mr. St, uh, Mr. Seener, if we have to meet, would you be available to meet?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Seener?
Yeah. See, chief, are we on the same page as what we're talking about right now, you and the mayor? Are we on the same page?
What the body is saying is tonight, this is the mechanism to create the, the, the base salary. It has not been funded, and so two weeks from now, they will fund the positions. Tonight, they're, they're raising the salaries, so that you can begin to make sure we finalize, and then they're gonna approve it, but they have to make the cuts at the same time. Which, that's what discussion is. Does that answer the question?
I'm saying that. Just Mr. Seener's question about these officers without.
Can, can you come to the mic? We, we keep getting messages to city council, as part of this, you, you may have to, look at, up the equipment. Keep getting messages, the, the equipment, the sound is terrible.
I wanna try to, that's the question.
It makes us beat the weather.
The question was, how many officers do we have, and without stating a number, we're in dire straits, we're in trouble. And I know we keep putting this off, we're putting it off, and we're putting it off for two weeks, and I understand, Mr. Ethel, I understand the financial situation that you're talking about. But the welfare of this community, the safety of this community is at stake. We have an officer's last day tomorrow, he's going to game and fish. Uh, we have disciplinary issues that we're dealing with, uh, officers who are not working. So we are in dire straits, we're, we are, we are in serious, um, trouble. And I, I just hope you all are listening.
And, and Chief Miller, I, I'm, I'm with you there. Uh, and I, when we start, when we start asking those questions about how many we got on the street. When we say that crime rate goes up, because they know, it goes up higher, because people know what you got. So I think that's a question we should never ask in a meeting about, how many on the street? Because how many folks that go out, they know what time to bring in. So I think, I think that's one of the things we need to, we need to stop telling.
Not only that, uh, what we have been bombarded, bombarded with is complaints of not responding in time. Slow responses, and we, we can't do it, we don't have what it takes to do that. So people are waiting thirty minutes, where we was responding for five minutes, uh, in this city, so. We are, we are at a point now to where we need police officers, we need them now. Best way I can put it.
Can, can you, I know you're busy, but can you find some time to give Ms. Mills and get that paperwork in too, so we can get that money? Cause I think she waiting on some paperwork, so we can. Okay.
What I have for me?
Good, cause she, I think she out in the hall.
So much I'm working.
She out in the hall now, maybe you can talk to her. So we can get that money. Cause that's.
Well, that's the mayor and the city treasurer, they need to be sitting down and.
Okay.
Doing this instead of making excuses.
Okay. Let's get that worked out.
So, is, mayor, would, would you entertain a motion to suspend the rule, place ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, on the third and final reading? Uh, uh, reading the title on one?
Ordinance number one, place on third and final reading. Reading the title only, suspend the rules. Yes, sir. You make the motion, Mr. St, fill him, make the motion, and they second the motion, is that any discussion? Discussion, I don't wanna have, thi- this doesn't take place, we do the next seventy thousand steps, so we all clear. So, Mayor, call the roll.
Yes. This, this notice, six yes?
Ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance to fix the number and base pay the full-time city employees, amend it all on the process ordinance and for. All the purpose, there needs to be a motion to adopt.
Is there a motion to adopt? Is St. Columbia, is the motion today, second the motion? Is that any discussion? Mayor, call the roll.
Mr. Ethelwing?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Seener? Six yes?
Mayor, Uncle Twelve, Mercy Clause, has entertained a motion to.
Is that motion to Dr. Mercy Clause? Mr. St. Columbia? Mrs. Davis, second the motion, is that any discussion? Mayor, call the roll.
Mr. Seener? Mr. Davis? Mr. Ethelwing?
Yes.
Mrs. Seener?
Yes.
Six yes?
Most of them cares now, it just needs a funding mechanism.
So do. As Bob said, you know, this is not a cop grant.
Is it?
For funding of it.
Well, you haven't made a, a proposition, two weeks from now, you need a proposition, unless I have a special card, read before then, then do it.
Would you all like to meet, by the beginning of next week, or a week from today, so you all can have time to digest this, so we can be ready to move forward?
I think we should.
That's the things you all like, that you all want to be to adjust, we will adjust those, but I want you all to move. We, I give the chief of staff, and I've given you so much tonight, but this is a plan that I think that we can build, and we should, with our, this is the second city. So if you all commit to meet on next Tuesday or Monday, so we can, so you all can. If there's something that you all wanna do, or to see that makes a change or anything, that I'm, I'm, I'm ready for that, so whatever.
Tuesday, yeah. I'm not going to Bible, sir. I'm not going to Bible, too.
I'm not available on Monday and Tuesday, but I don't have to be here for you all to discuss the finances.
So would you all, I mean, whatever day you all like, I'm, 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 I'm open, chief of staff, if you're open.
Okay, so the thirteenth, mayor? Thirteen, seven?
It's, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm here. The thirteenth? Yes, sir. Are you, is that good for you? Is it good?
Thursday, that's what I'm saying, Thursday.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. Ethel? So, so, so we'll meet ne- next Tuesday?
What's the big dog?
Uh, cause if they have anything to hash this out, and we can probably get a vote next Tuesday, to move forward, and once they, and when, when we come to agree with what.
It's two things on the agenda, your ordinance, which will be proposed, ordinance number two, twenty, twenty twenty-five, and your, the plan that didn't submit.
Uh, that's not another order.
Ordinance here. About come time.
Yeah, that's a come.
I said, that ordinance and, and the plan.
Oh, you said, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, um, and I was going late, and. Seventeen, two, other two officers, this one I wanted to speak to you all, but there's a question. I believe you, you allowed the mayor to go down to Partners Bank to, uh, check to see if they would finance the repair of the trucks that we have that are down. We got two grapple trucks, uh, two, one grapple truck, two front-end loaders, and we got a CID Dodge Ram. All of those are in need of repair, and if my memory is right, it's right at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair those. Uh. And so, the mayor went down and spoke with the loan officer, and he said he would approve the loan, process the paperwork if the city council authorized. Now, that may be something you wanna wait another week on, until you decide on this comprehensive plan. Um, but those trucks are sitting there, in those shops, and eventually what's gonna happen is that they're gonna have fees for sitting there. So we're gonna have to do something at some point.
It, it would help to know what the terms of the loan are.
Mr. Mayor, did, did he provide you with that?
Uh, he said, he said it would, but he wants to, uh. That's, that's far as he could go, because he needed to know if the council was, that's what they want to do. And that's, that, he said, he would do it, but he needed some more information. He needed a, a yes, a no, and he would proceed. But I think, but he did say, like, ten thousand dollars for like, just right at twelve months, a year, or he could do five, like twenty. So, I guess me too, do we have something better?
And it's also.
What's that, Mr. Mayor?
A resolution, uh, for grand administrator, you.
I'd say.
Let's do about fifteen, we, we, we just, we just put this on the general fifteen.
Do you have a copy on the table? And then, uh, I, I just put it on the, 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 the one, yes, we do. But there's a copy on the table.
So, for the.
Mr. Kent, Mr. Valley has a copy too.
We can just put this on next week. So Tuesday, next week?
Yeah, Tuesday.
So you'll be soon enough for whatever it needs to be, I, I don't know what it is.
I think I do on fifteen.
Let's do about a fifteen, so we do it on the thirteenth, we'll be done.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, and then there's a public hearing before your council meeting on the twentieth, to address, uh, one of our water projects, I think it is. The, the fund council is requiring that we do that public hearing. Of course, uh, attendance is optional, certainly we'll be here, it was optional for everybody else. We encourage you to be here, it's telling you that's going on. Twenty, 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 before the meeting on the twentieth, the public hearing, regarding, uh, taking steps that the, what the lawyers told us to take. In order to make sure we've dotted I's and crossed T's in order to get the loan funded for our water project. It, it looked like there would be some more money that we would receive shortly for water. So, uh, we're working towards, like, we'll be receiving some more, so that, so you all just stay tuned, we're working hard to take care of water. Alright. All right.
Mr. 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 Chief Bill, what's?
This is the one, the, the, the potential, uh, whoever, the one that's still in the, that's national, we'll put that off to the next meeting or what's it?
You say, exactly, that's, that's, I don't see people. When I saw. Well, I, that's the one that the city attorney told me, I think, couldn't be able to run the litigation.
I thought he got that straight now. I thought he got that straight.
The litigation.
How's the litigation going on, Orr? Uh, we filed an answer to it and we've sent it to the Mississippi League, uh, that, uh, that litigation is is ongoing. We had a hearing last week and, uh, and then after the hearing, we we were sending it to the Mississippi League. But it's, it's nothing, we filed an answer, we denied all the allegations and we'll go forward with the explanation to it.
Which, which case is it?
I don't understand, we're talking Tyler Orr versus this, uh.
That's not the one they're talking about.
Which case you're talking about?
That's the town.
Where's your police officer?
Police officer. Against what?
They're all the agents.
I thought you were asking, that's the, that's the case, that that is who.
Police officer or something?
Yes, sir.
Let, let him hear, let him talk.
That's what, that's what, let's know there was a dress, and do you, he do, do you wait now? The chief of staff was saying that you said he, the litigation going, he needs to wait before he has a hearing.
Oh. As as a practical issue, the, among those two officers. Uh, the issue, the issue with it is 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 quite simple. Uh. They can submit an application like any other person, it's up to the administration whether to hire them. There is no living. The termination of those four officers was well over a year ago. And so there's no pending employment action against them at this point.
So they can apply and just come back to work? If they, yeah, that's correct.
They can apply, if, I'm not the person who'd hire them prior.
Um, what's the status? How y'all doing this evening? I'm Detective Sanders, most of you know me. I'm coming to you guys asking for help. As Chief Bill said, we have an officer leaving tomorrow. This come time thing that we're talking about, we don't even have time to take our vacation. We have multiple officers losing vacation at the end of every year. So when we talk about four hundred and eighty hours of come time, we'll never see it. We're, we're in major trouble. It's not even hot outside yet and we're running nonstop. Like, we won't, we won't talk about the numbers that we have, but we're stretched thin. Calls that I'd say take three officers, the volume, we're having two officers, sometimes one showing up, because we have to go separate ways. I I'm just here to ask you guys for help. That's all I'm here for. We, we've, we've been, Chief Bill's been up before you guys multiple times. We need action. We talk about where the road meets the road, we're at the road. Officers have interviews other places, multiple agencies have reached out to me. I'm here, I love this city. I'm just asking for help right now. I mean, we need something, some kind of help. That's all. We, I mean, is it, is it in you guys' hands to give us some kind of relief? Twelve, sixteen, eighteen hour days. Stop the road from meeting the road, but now we're here, we're losing officers. We can't do what we need to do. One more I say, I'll talk to you guys one-on-one, you guys say you hear me. Not saying you don't, but we know what happens in the summer. It's it's about to be, it's need help.
We go, we, 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 we trying to flesh out the details now, but help is on the way. They're working, we, we, help is on the way, I I guarantee you, we're working on that, just, 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 just give us, just a couple of days, help is on the way. We guarantee that, we're working to provide you all, Lee, uh, that's why me and the chief of staff submitted this plan and the councils, we're working. Got our shoes on, and we standing up, so we'll, we'll, just give us a day, we'll get you the help that you need. Mr. Staley?